Good evening and welcome to the March 8th Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll? Dave hears me.
You're muted.
But my mic's on. Do I unmute this? Good evening and welcome to the March 8th Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Emilio. Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
If teachers don't feel comfortable teaching without the COVID vaccine, they can just get another jump.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Deputy Chief Hank, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, two public forums which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is Citizens Forum. I believe we have a registered speaker.
Mr. Smith, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Let me allow you to share your screen.
I thought we were...
I'm sorry. Am I on the wrong place here?
Yeah, I think Sherri Foster Group.
I'm sorry. You're correct. Let me see if I can bring her up. Thank you. Sherri, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Sorry about that. You can have your comments now.
All right. Can you all see me because I only see you guys?
No, we won't be able to see your face as a speaker. This is the public forum, so I don't have the ability to do that in this forum.
Oh, that's quite all right. Thank you ever so much. So, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and congratulations to Mr. Paul Becker on celebrating his 100th birthday on February 11th. I was especially impressed with all the camping trips he took with his wife to many of our national parks. So, the proclamation honoring Mr. Becker is the first of two proclamations that you, the Board of Commissioners, will issue tonight. The second proclamation declares that March be National Nutrition Month in Haverford Township. The proclamation asks all citizens to, quote, "become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others," end of quote. While this is a laudable goal, why does this proclamation not include information that 52,970 residents or 9.4% of the people living in Delaware County are food insecure as listed in the Delco Times before the pandemic? And why does this proclamation not ask residents to donate food to local food banks or to participate in more of the township food drives such as the one that happened on Martin Luther King Day at the crack? Frankly, why is there not a third proclamation on the agenda declaring March to be Women's History Month in Haverford Township? Why is this Board of Commissioners not celebrating women's contributions to our township and our state? Why are we not honoring Edith Hanham, who served as Commissioner of the Fourth Ward from 1922 until 1969, 47 years? Edith Hanham also showed true visionary leadership by helping found our Haverford Township Free Library and serving as its director for 32 years. Why are we not honoring Philadelphia women like Lucretia Mott, who helped launch the Campaign for Women's Suffrage 160 years earlier back in 1848? Or Frances Walker Harper, who in 1858 refused to move to the, quote, "colored," end of quote, section of a segregated trolley car in Philadelphia 97 years before Rosa Parks? Harper died in Philadelphia in 1911 after a career as a poet, anti-slavery activist, advocate for black women's right to vote, and a defender of black education. Harper's example raises a second question. Why did the Board of Commissioners not proclaim February Black History Month? If our township is going to be an inclusive community that embraces all peoples of all genders, races, religions, and ethnicities, we need to challenge each other to change set attitudes and assumptions. Today is International Women's Day, and the theme for this year is choose to challenge. And today, I choose to challenge you, the Board of Commissioners, to issue proclamations that show support for more than just nutrition. And I would also like to help bring change and a new perspective to the Board of Commissioners so that the Board looks more like the township. And this is why, one of the many reasons that I'm going to be running for the Commissioner of the Second Ward. Thank you ever so much for letting me talk today, and I hope you have a productive meeting.
Thank you. There's one additional comment that was emailed to us from Stephanie Archer, 236 Frederick Road, Haverton. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Archer, and I live at 236 Frederick Road in the Paddock Farm section of Haverton. During the tropical storms in August of 2019 and 2020, my property flooded due to the inability of the storm drainage system in my neighborhood to adequately manage the rainfall. In both instances, I reached out to the Township Manager, Public Works Manager, and Fourth Ward Commissioner. In 2019, nothing transpired from the communication. I was told the storm was a 100-year storm, and there were no blockages in the drainage system, so therefore, nothing would be done to the strain, storm drain system in my area. In 2020, another tropical storm occurred, again flooding my property. Again, I reached out to the Fourth Ward Commissioner, the Public Works Manager, and the Township Manager regarding the flooding. When I received less than adequate response to my phone calls and emails, I registered for the September 14th Commissioners' meeting and gave a statement of my disappointment in communication. As a result, I received an invitation to meet with the Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and the Public Works Manager at my property to discuss the flooding issues. At the time of the meeting, I was told that David Penone would be completing an assessment of the flooding affecting my property along with 18 other problem areas in Haverford Township. Mr. Penone indicated that once the assessment of the problem areas was complete, he would provide this information to the Township Commissioners at the Commissioners' Work Session in the fourth quarter of 2020 or the first quarter of 2021. Mr. Berman indicated that once the information was provided to the Township Commissioners, the Commissioners would decide what, if anything, would be done to the storm management system in the problem areas. My questions for the Township Manager and Commissioners are: one, where are the results from the assessment that were to be shared with the Commissioners at the Commissioners' Work Session? Two, how was it decided that Winfield Drive was to be addressed first? And three, what is the plan for the 18 other problem areas in the township? That would be the end of the Citizens Forum. Mr. Berman, do you want to comment on...
Yes, Dr. Hart. We have asked Penone to look at a number of areas throughout the township, and we are in the process of communicating that information to the Commissioners individually by ward, and we are going to be meeting with each of the Commissioners very shortly, and then that information will be presented publicly and released, and the Board will have the opportunity to make some of these difficult decisions. Winfield Drive was not first. It's an area where there are probably 30-some homes that get flooded frequently, and that's an area that is receiving a flood mitigation study, which is somewhat different from what these stormwater management analyses are. I know that Penone has been out to Frederick and Chuck Faulkner, our engineer, is here online, and he might tell us a little bit more about the studies that have been conducted there.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Berman. Just update the Board. I don't know if everyone has had a chance to look through the report, but the direction of the township after the tropical storm was to go out, look at these properties that were flooded, evaluate the situation, and determine some possible solutions and associated costs, and then report back to the Board. And that is what we've done. It was not a small undertaking. I don't have to tell anybody on the Board what happens when we get intense rains like that. It's a lot of... There's infrastructure there that is not made for that. Part of what we did was look at that infrastructure. We've looked at past studies that were done in some areas that has flooded, was flooded during ISIS, and we pulled all that information together in one report, and I believe everybody has that in front of you. So, as Mr. Berman said, the next step is to sit down, probably on a word-by-ward basis, and evaluate the situation and determine what the next step would be. And I think it's... Until that's done, it's probably not appropriate to release to the public at this point until we have some consensus on what might be some of the solutions. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if any of the Commissioners have any.
Are there any questions?
I can't hear. Steve.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just want to reassure the public that every member of this Board is very concerned about the flooding that has been taking place, and, in fact, recently, areas that never flooded have started to flood. And that is one of the reasons why we asked Mr. Penone to look into the areas that are now experiencing flooding and those that did in the past, and what the township can do to help alleviate this flooding, because it is affecting many people's homes, and the township recognizes that. And I appreciate the work that Mr. Penone's office did and Chuck, what you guys accomplished. And we are going to meet one-on-one with Dave, Mr. Berman. Mr. Berman sent out an email to each of us that have issues, and he's going to meet one-on-one with us, and at that point, I assume that this Board will make the necessary recommendations to make any changes that we can make. I mean, obviously, Chuck, there may be situations that we can't make changes. Is that correct?
That's quite possible. I mean, there's some things that are, as the Board knows, are just, you know, very costly and involve a lot of other parameters that may not be, you know, appropriate to do.
But rest assured that we will provide that information to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And in regards to Ms. Forrest Grump's comments, you're certainly appreciated. Your proclamations acknowledging Women's History Month, Black History Month are certainly notable areas for us to acknowledge. We do actually tonight have four proclamations, so there is somewhat of a limit to the number of areas that we can address, but certainly, we acknowledge the importance of the areas that you've addressed. I wonder if I could have a motion. There have been two proclamations to be added, one for Holocaust Days of Remembrance and another for the Climate Action Plan Update. Somebody move to add those?
Yes, I'll move to add those.
Second?
I'll second.
That was Commissioner Quinn, and seconded by Commissioner Oliva. First proclamation is for Paul Becker on his 100-year birthday milestone. Commissioner Wexler, do you want to read that?
I'd like to read. I'll read this into the record. I had the privilege of presenting this proclamation to Mr. Becker back on February 11th, his actual birthday, and I'd like to thank all the fire companies and the Police Department of the Township. They all turned down and forced all five fire companies, did a drive-by. He was taken aback. The American Legion presented him with a portrait, and he was just in awe of somebody paying attention to him just because he, quote, "got to a certain age." So, he's a real gentleman. So, there is where the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania take great pleasure in recognizing significant milestones in the lives of individuals residing in the community. And whereas Paul Becker was born February 11th, 1921, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Paul has reached his 100th-year birthday milestone. And whereas upon graduation from Central High School in Philadelphia in 1938, he worked at the Philadelphia Navy Yard as an airplane engineer, inspector, deemed essential work to the war effort. And whereas Paul enlisted in the Army Air Force in 1943, under a program allowing qualified high school graduates to train for elite positions on Air Force bombers. He trained as a bombardier and was commissioned as Second Lieutenant. He was undergoing radar training when the war ended and was honorably discharged. He returned to the Navy Yard as a catapult inspector and eventually a supervising engineer, technician at the Naval Air Engineering Center, also based at the Navy Yard. And whereas he and his wife Evelyn were married for 73 years and inseparable until her death in 2019 at the age of 95, they moved to 244 Claymar Avenue in 1964. He still resides there. They raised three daughters, all graduates of Haverford Senior High School. Paul's secret to a long and happy marriage: keep your mouth shut. He made pancakes from scratch every Saturday morning of his married life. And whereas in their retirement, Paul and Evelyn traveled the world and country. They drove cross-country countless times, often tent camping, well into his 80s. Together, they visited nearly every one of the nation's national parks that can be reached by car. He inscribed the names of each park he visited on one of the many walking sticks he has made for himself and others. And whereas Paul famously can do it all, the ultimate handyman, whose expertise was sought by his family and friends. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, offers our deepest congratulations to Paul Becker and wish him continued health and happiness. Proclaim this 11th day of February 2001, Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, Jerry T. Hart, MD, President. I want to thank you all for that. It was a moving experience to see the emotion that he had that evening. And again, thank you to the fire companies and the Haverford Township Police Department and the American Legion of Manoa.
The next proclamation is for National Nutrition Month 2021. National Nutrition Month is a nutrition, education, and information campaign created annually in March by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. The campaign focuses attention on the importance of making informed food choices and developing sound eating and physical activity habits. Proclamation: Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes pride in those that reach out and serve their community. And whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained. And whereas the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in overall health and fitness. And whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education and wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices. Now, the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township do hereby proclaim the month of March National Nutrition Month in Haverford Township, Pennsylvania, and encourage all citizens to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow. Proclaim this 8th day of March 2021, the Township Board of Commissioners. The next proclamation is an Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas the trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the last Friday in April as Arbor Day in Haverford Township, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim this 8th day of March 2021, Township of Haverford. Just as a follow of that, I hope that we, next month, will finally have a revised shade tree ordinance to help further protect trees. The next proclamation is for Holocaust Days of Remembrance. I believe Commissioner Siegel is going to read that.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the Board for allowing me to add this to the agenda, because the holiday is very early this year, won't occur this early again until 2032. Whereas the U.S. Congress established Days of Remembrance as the nation's annual commemoration of the Holocaust and as the time to honor its victims, survivors, and liberators, and as a reflection on the importance of dignity and respect for all persons. And whereas the Holocaust, also known as the Shoah, was a tragic genocide during which approximately 6 million Jews were murdered by the Nazi regime and its collaborators between 1939 and 1945. And whereas during the Holocaust, Roma, gypsies, people with disabilities and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the internationally recognized date for Holocaust Remembrance Day corresponds to the 27th day of Nisan on the Hebrew calendar and marks the anniversary of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising. Whereas in Hebrew, Holocaust Remembrance Day is called Yom HaShoah. In the United States, the Days of Remembrance run from the Sunday before Yom HaShoah through the following Sunday. Whereas the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Council has determined that the Days of Remembrance will be commemorated on Thursday, April 8, 2021, with observances and remembrance activities to occur nationwide between Sunday, April 4, and Sunday, April 11. Whereas the Days of Remembrance are intended to be an opportunity to reflect on the tragedy of the Holocaust and of the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. Whereas in a time of increased antisemitism and Holocaust denial, individuals, societies, and governments must be vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and must work to ensure that all citizens are educated about these crimes against humanity. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township do hereby encourage all township residents to observe the week of Sunday, April 4, through Sunday, April 11, as the Days of Remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township do hereby encourage all citizens of the Township of Haverford to promote human dignity and confront hatred whenever and wherever it occurs. Proclaim this 8th day of March 2021, the Township of Haverford, Gerald Hart, MD, President.
One further announcement from the Environmental Advisory Commission. Haverford is updating its Climate Action Plan, and there's a call for community input through participation in the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Local Climate Action Program. Haverford Township has been given the opportunity to update its 2005 Climate Action Plan. The DEP's program provides the resources and tools needed to create a comprehensive plan, including partnership with a member of its student cohort. Jada Ackley, a senior environmental studies major at Temple University, minoring in city and regional planning, will assist the township in this project. An important part of the project is obtaining community input on local environmental challenges and potential solutions. If you are interested in climate action and want to share your ideas, please join Jada and the EAC's Climate Action Task Force for a discussion on Wednesday, March 10, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The registration deadline is March 9 at 12 noon. And I think we're through that, and we now have Noel Smith from the EAC, the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Berman, and thank you to the Commissioners for considering this resolution. This is a topic of, I guess, pretty important health issues with some of our community members in Delaware County. So, let me share my screen and give you some of the background, and I'll just say, if you have questions as we go along, feel free to go ahead and ask them, and we'll just address them as we go. And let me pull up my screen. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
All right, great. So, we'll just... Yep, so this resolution is about, really, it's really about environmental justice in the Delaware County trash team. It's not about Haverford Township's trash, per se. It's about the county and how the county handles trash, and we're going to ask the county to do some things as part of this resolution. So, just a couple of background points. There's a trash incinerator in Chester City. It's owned by Covanta, and over 350,000 tons of Delco waste. So, I call it our waste, but, you know, we're one piece of that. But all the waste in Delco is burned in this Covanta plant under a contract from the Delco Solid Waste Authority. It is now the largest trash-burning plant in the United States, and after the refinery in southeast, in South Philadelphia, stopped running a couple of years ago, this is now the largest source of air pollution in southeastern Pennsylvania, and the primary pollutants are mercury and nitrogen oxide, which, you know, mercury has got health impacts to children's development, and of course, nitrogen oxide contributes to ozone pollution in the community as well. And this is an important point. Municipalities are obligated to send our trash to this centralized waste disposal, this transfer facility, and as such, you know, there's this contract that's in place to burn virtually all of our trash. You know, things that don't go to recycling get burned, and through this contract with Covanta, the contract is expiring. Next year, they may start negotiations as early as May, and that's why the timing of this is kind of key as well. We want to influence that and let the Commissioners for Delco know that we want them to reevaluate this with some certain other lenses involved. But one of the stipulations of this contract that we have, or the county has, with Covanta is, we're actually guaranteeing that we send this amount of waste to be burned in this facility. And what that does is it... And what that does is it actually disincentivizes us from reducing our waste. Because if we reduce our waste to send to that plant, we still pay for it. And that's kind of an important point, is the way that the contract is written today, we are disincented from trying to reduce our waste stream, and we end up paying twice. So just a little bit of background about how that contract's written. So some of the challenges for the residents of Chester City and really all of Delco and the Philadelphia area. Philadelphia is the fourth, I was surprised when I saw this, but we're the fourth most challenging area to live with asthma in the United States. And it's from the Asthma and Allergy Foundation. Delaware or Delco is 22% higher than the state average. In Chester City is almost 300% higher. And again, you know, in part due to this burning of our, you know, the Delco trash there. Again, Chester City has the lowest median household income in all of Delco. The county at around 28,000 to 30,000 per household, and the countywide median 75, and of course, Haverford is about 93, kind of the top end of that. So we were asked to help by this group of citizens. It's a grassroots group called Circle Chester Residents Concerned for Quality Living. And basically, this resolution reflects the help that they are asking us to do. And I'll say they're asking us, they're not just asking Haverford Township. They've got an effort to ask every municipality within Delaware County to pass a very similar resolution that we have in front of you today. So what else can we do with our trash? And nothing's perfect, and it's a really complex topic, right? Because, you know, the waste has to go somewhere. And one other point about our burning of the waste is burning of the waste doesn't eliminate landfilling. So the residual from the burn, the ash, which is all the, many of the toxins, and I said this toxic mix of ash, that is in fact sent to the landfill that's owned by Delaware County. So the best is, of course, reducing waste. You have less to dispose of. Recycling is good, we need to do that, but it's hard as well. As you saw in the last couple of years, the markets changed. You know, there's other costs associated, so it's not cheap, and the markets are challenging. Composting is really great. It's limited to compostables, but I will say compostables is a large component of our waste stream. And if we do composting really well, we can have significant, you know, reductions in what goes to be disposed of. So landfills take up land, you know, they produce their own impacts, if you will. They produce leachate that must be, you know, managed and treated as well. So we're not trying to say, hey, don't burn it, everything's happy. We know there's impacts, it's just what's, you know, the better outcome. And let me go to the next slide. So a proposed resolution is for actions, and this is what you'll see in front of you. One is do not extend the contract to burn our trash. Two is to evaluate waste reduction strategies countywide and hire experts that can guide us all to do that. Number three is to consider environmental and health effects of waste disposal alternatives when you make that decision. And then lastly, and really very important, is consider environmental justice in the decision-making when you go and consider how are we going to take care of this going forward? And yeah, that's really the end of it. There's, you know, we have some supporting material that if you need to see it, you know, we can do that. We've got some references that we did to look at, you know, life cycle assessment and comparing landfill to burn. And, you know, we let science kind of guide us. But the essential, you know, what we're trying to get to is to, is a resolution for these four actions. And I'll also say that there's really strong support in our community for this resolution. We also know that there's an online signature going around that has, I think, about 400 signatures from members of our community that are in support of taking this action. So it was, it's whatever, you know, individuals or groups I've spoken to, you know, have come out in support of this, including the EAC and hopefully you all. So I'll pause there for any questions.
Yes, Noel, I just have a few. For the Covanta, will that still be there? Like, if we don't extend the contract, will that building still be there? And what would be the point? Like, how would it be, how would it make sense? I get what we're trying to do here, and I think it's great. But I just don't know what if that's still going to be there. What are we trying to accomplish here?
Yeah, thanks for that question. That's actually a really great point. I meant to make that as I went along, that, you know, by us going out and saying, hey, you know, don't burn our trash there, that isn't going to make a difference. So what we're really looking to do is, you know, for all of the municipalities within Delco to go ahead and make that statement and give the support to, you know, the Delaware County leadership team that we want to do something different. I mean, the goal of the city, the residents of Chester City is to close this plant, to have it not burn there in our community anymore. This is just one piece of a larger strategy. And, you know, we're just asking the county to consider these things, right? We're not telling, you know, we can't change it, right? It's really in their hands. But we're saying, we recognize there's a systemic injustice that's going on. And when you recognize systemic injustices, you know, it's, I feel it's our obligation to make known that we don't want you to continue that and that you should look at other paths. But your point is a good point, and it's not that easy. Just pass a resolution and it's done. This doesn't guarantee it's going to happen, but it could put him on a path to resolve this and to move forward in a better way. It may take longer than they want, but, you know, this kind of brings the community support. It brings, you know, some awareness to this, and it puts our voice out there. It says, we don't think this is right, and we think you should look at something different. And another point, I didn't put this on there, but, you know, they also take in waste from other communities. It's not just Delaware County's trash that goes there. Some comes from New York, New York State, and Maryland, and New Jersey as well. But, you know, we're between Delco and Philadelphia counties. They're probably two-thirds of the waste that gets burnt there, so.
And then the other thing, I don't know if this makes sense, what I'm about to say, but it will. But like, what if there's a place up in Bucks or Berks that is, that we use instead? Wouldn't that be just trying to push the, or kick the can down on the road to some other area?
Yeah, it's a good question. Well, I guess what we're asking them to do is to look at all those aspects of waste management. And we know that burning it is the least effective. It's the most costly, you know, it's, the studies that we looked at showed a couple of things. One, it is worse for human health, and that's just clear. It puts toxins into the air. Two, it's the worst for global warming. It puts the most greenhouse gas emissions into the air. It's also more expensive, the most expensive way of producing energy if you're claiming you're getting energy from it. You would never choose to do that because it's the most expensive energy. And as far as waste disposal, it's also an expensive way to do that. So landfilling is less impactful to the community. But the idea is that if we get the expertise and start driving a long-term roadmap to reduce our waste, I mean, that's the solution, right? Is to bring it down to where you minimize it as much as we can. We know there's going to be waste. There's no such thing as having nothing, right? But there are a ton of things we can do to reduce that. And we're just asking to consider these things and to start going down a path of reducing it and get a roadmap to close that, stop burning that waste in Delco and in Chester.
Well, thank you for the answers, and thank you for your understanding where I'm coming from here.
Yeah, I totally get it, yes. It's completely rational and reasonable questions because that's the reality of it, yeah.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, Mr. Smith. My trouble with this resolution is it doesn't call for specific actions. I, to me, it would have more impact or be more of benefit if it said, we would like to, you know, that the county should, you know, convene a group, let's say, among the municipalities that contribute to it, that there should be aspirational goals that are practical. Because we're not going to eliminate the pollution. We don't know what the cost is to the county and therefore to us and our residents in taxes by changing to a different system. So it seems to me that we have a resolution that, of course, says all the right things and all the things we'd all like in an ideal world. But isn't there a way to refocus this so it provides concrete recommendations? We've made other resolutions where we've said we would like to see this or that happen, or a reduction or something like that. And this just strikes me as, well, let's all hope that the county does something without a way of creating that roadmap.
Yeah, so thanks for those questions, they're good questions too. And, you know, when we were trying to craft the right ask for the county, one of the things that we talked about a lot and realized is, you know, it is the county's responsibility to do this. And, you know, we, to go in and start solutioning and, you know, driving them towards a specific solution would take a lot more expertise and analysis and cost. And we didn't have the resources to do that or the time. And frankly, it's the county's responsibility to do those things that you said. They own from the transfer facility to the disposal. And we think that it's, this resolution, the way it's written, it does express our intent, which is to not burn our trash. It does express our intent that we want them to look at reducing our waste countywide. And it also, you know, talks about environmental justice and health impacts. And, you know, they're the things that we want them to look at as they reevaluate it. We don't, you know, so that was the thought, and there was a lot of discussion in the EAC. We pared it down, I guess, quite a bit from maybe something that was more directive to really let them know where, you know, where our voice is in terms of taking action without, you know, giving them concrete direction. Because again, it's just, it's a complex topic, and they have to take input from all of the municipalities to do this.
I understand, but we are one of the largest. So theoretically, we should have a greater impact than a smaller community. And I would just like to see somewhere that that's expressed even. You know, we spend a large amount of money. When we, when I first joined this board, it was when the county was just instituting a charge for the dumping and the disposal. Now it is a significant part of our budget, impacts, the budget impacts the trash fee. And I would love to know how we incorporate that financial power into getting or trying to have the county at least open a dialogue. That's just my point.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
Noel, I want to thank you for spearheading this. I think you did a great job. I think that it's a start, and we need to, I would hope that this board supports this. My question is, have you heard anything from the county? Is the county aware of what you're suggesting?
Yeah, so put this as asking in a larger perspective. The county is aware. I've not personally approached the county. I'm approaching, you know, or, you know, you all, and to come at it from Haverford Township. But the group called Circle, this group of residents in Chester City have absolutely approached the county commissioners with this ask as well. What we're doing is we're providing our voice to say, yeah, we, as a community, also are saying that we support, you know, that ask, which is what we put into this resolution.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? Noel, thank you very much. And the resolution will be coming up a little later in the evening. The next item on the agenda is the Bureau Fire update. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The report from the Bureau of Fire came to me the other day. The five companies comprising the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to 102 incidents in the month of February 2021. The membership response total for members responding to calls was 1,224 members. And the weekly combined training for all five fire companies was 840 hours this past month. There were two significant incidents for the month. Greenview Lane in the Landmark section was an exterior fire that extended into the structure. All five fire companies made the response, and the fire was brought under control in the first 20 minutes of the response. On Joanna Road, also in the Landmark section, there was a working structure fire, a house fire, with significant damage. All five fire companies responded and operated for almost four hours on the scene. Mutual Aid responded for manpower and provided coverage to the rest of the township while our companies were in service. Thirty-eight air pack bottles were filled on scene by the Bon Air Fire Company Air Bank. Several companies have members currently attending National Firefighter 1 Class, the local fire academy, and the five companies participated in two 100 birthday drive-by celebrations for World War II veterans. So it was a busy month, and I think also the Manoa Water Rescue Team was also down at the Delaware River in Ridley Township on a car, submerged car event a week or two ago that we mentioned last week as well. So that's all I have to report on the Bureau of Fire. Thank you.
Bill, if I could just add to that for a second. Just my special thanks to the Oakmont Fire Department, who responded to a dumpster fire in my shared driveway last Friday. And so thanks to those people and the police officers that showed up and helped out.
Great.
Mr. President?
Mr. D'Amelio?
I think it's important to remind the residents of Haverford Township that these are all volunteers. They don't get paid for what they do. That water rescue that occurred in Chester, they were all volunteers that did a tremendous job. And basically, their training, the amount of hours that they did or performed, it's just amazing that they have that kind of commitment to their community. So I think it's important, a lot of residents that I run into and a lot of the firefighters tell me that residents do not know because, I mean, you know, quite frankly, we're changing. You know, a lot of new families are moving in, and they're used, some live in the city and are used to a paid fire company and police department. Our police department's paid, but the fire company certainly isn't. So we need to recognize that, and then we need to make sure the residents know that, you know, these are all volunteers, men and women.
Thank you for those comments.
Yeah, we appreciate the comments. I know our township to that end does give a discount on our township taxes to our volunteer firefighters that are homeowners, that are entitled to that. And I just was informed a week or two ago, and we're asking, the legislator has removed the limit on that, as well as opened it up so that school districts are now also empowered to offer a discount to volunteer firefighters for their service as well. And we, as a township, I've asked the township manager to verify the legislator get that, and then we will write a letter to the president of the school board. I'm going to meet with them and ask them to consider a tax incentive for our firefighters on their property taxes from the county side and the school board taxes as well. So we are moving to reward or at least give some monetary recognition to our firefighters that own homes in the township as well. So that's coming up, that's moving forward as well as we speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item on the agenda is the Township Auditor update. Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Hello, I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. In addition, I do want to encourage everybody that can to get vaccinated. I know that seems a little obvious, given like the mass signups that we've had, but there are a lot of groups of people and a lot of various individuals that have not been signing up but should be signing up. I personally will be volunteering tomorrow at the Philadelphia Convention Center and hopefully helping get more people vaccinated, as well as myself.
Thank you, good luck with that. Next item is... Uh, next item is Township Manager Update. Mr. Berman.
Commissioners, good evening. Um, as you know, March 1st, the governor issued his revised COVID-19 mitigation orders. And so that allows us to modify some of our operations. Um, earlier today, we did reopen our lobby and our finance folks will be staffed, uh will have one person staffed in the lobby to accept tax payments from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM during the discount period, which ends on March 34th. So uh folks can come in and get a receipt for their tax payments during the discount period. Uh, all other business, we're going to ask you to try to make an appointment. Um, we understand sometimes that not, that's not possible, so we'll try to help everybody we can, but we're also trying to maintain social distancing. Stadium operations, we've increased our maximum occupancy to uh 295 persons. Previously, uh, I'm sorry, under normal circumstances, the maximum occupancy of the stadium is 1,967 persons. So we're at about 15%. Uh, we're looking at other possible uh loosening of restrictions at the stadium when we start the spring season, which uh I believe happened sometime in April. The crack in the gymnasium, the typical or the normal occupancy is uh 240 persons. We've increased that to 25% or 60 people in the gymnasium at the stadium so that they can run some basketball games. Um, while still, of course, in all facilities, we're going to require face masks and social distancing, and we're going to follow the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Just to follow up on uh Mr. Anderson's comments, I dare, um, certainly the vaccine rollout has been very slow, less than we would have expected, but um it does seem, and in the next couple of weeks, that things are going to be picking up significantly in Delaware County. And there's a number of volunteer involved in giving the vaccines at at a number of centers and they are geared up to throughout the county for this week that they have vaccines. So um they should be starting to cut into the backlog. Um, and also to follow up on Mr. Anderson's comments, I I think, you know, right now there's more people who want the vaccine than can get it. Ultimately, though, we're going to need to be convincing people who aren't getting, don't want the vaccine, that they need to get it to help protect the whole community. We're not going to get out of this um pandemic unless we get a significant number of people vaccinated. Uh, moving on to item eight, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 8th, 2021.
Second. And seconded by Mr. Commissioner Quinn. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey. Mr. Siegel. Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Also muted. Uh, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Item number nine, approval of warrants.
President.
Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we approve warrant number three of 2021 totaling $3,590,310.29, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for February 18th, 2021, in the amount of General and sewer fund payroll for March 4th, 2021, in the amount of $712,446.76. General fund dispersments, number three of 2021, in the amount of $1,256,480.13. Sewer fund dispersments, number three, 2021, in the amount of $620,584.68. Community Development Block Grant Fund Dispersion, number three of 2021, in the amount of $97,835.32. Capital Projects Fund Dispersion, number three of 2021, in the amount of $150,835.32. And a credit card statement ending February 27th, 2021, in the amount of $6,486.16.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva.
Uh, Mr. President, our township auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that his review raised were raised by him to township personnel uh who answered his questions to his satisfaction. I recommend that we approve.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Item number 10, tax settlements and stipulations of council.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of Haverford Township School District Tax Assessment Appeal for the property located at 568 Lancaster Avenue, DC Folio number 22-05-00453-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number uh, Civil Docket number 2020-009382. An authorized council, township council, and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. Any comments?
This has been disclosed to us in uh, uh executive session and um, we just have to approve this uh in public and I recommend we do so.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Item number 11 is ordinance number P2 2021, traffic second reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a second reading of ordinance number P2 2021, authorizing the following traffic, traffic restrictions, um, mending sticker parking only on Vernon Road all times entire length and rescinding special purpose parking in front of 2946 Berkeley Road.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Uh, number 12, ordinance number P3 2021, stadium renewal of the Pro Shop lease, second reading.
President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the second reading of ordinance number P3 2021, authorizing the lease of certain township grounds, specifically the Pro Shop located at the township stadium, 1018 Darby Road, Haverford, PA.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio.
President, again, this is um something that was discussed in the executive session as it involves the lease of township property, but something we need to uh approve in public and we already have approved it last month, so I recommend we approve it again.
Thank you. Comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Moving on to item number 13, ordinance number P4 2021, it's another traffic second reading.
President, motion to adopt ordinance number P4 2021, uh, off-highway metered parking areas at the former township building, 2325 Darby Road.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. Any comments, questions? Mr. Berman, can you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Uh, item number 14, ordinance number P5 2021, traffic first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P5 2021, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Vernon Road South Side at the T-Around from the southwest corner to a point 30 feet west therefore. And, okay, and and then stop intersection on Lindwood Drive at the intersection of Maryland Avenue, making this a three-way stop intersection.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner D'Amelio.
Is this two separate? Are we voting this? Is that where it's set up that way?
I don't see.
If it's one ordinance, it's.
Yeah, it's one.
Yeah, because it's got voting, voting order too. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Uh, item number 15, ordinance number P6 2021, civil service regulation change. It's the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the Civil Service Commission's removal of Article Three, Applications and Qualifications subsection 32-19, subsection B, eliminating a candidate's requirement for Act 120.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Uh, item number 16.
Mr. President.
Yes.
President, just, I know we already voted, but before we move on for that, I know we discussed this at the work session, but it would be possible for the chief, just in 30, 20 seconds or less, to explain that the eliminating a candidate's requirement for Act 120 requirements is not going to do anything to the quality of the education of our police department and or the training of our officers.
Yes, Commissioner, I'd be glad to. Uh, the removal of the requirement for schools for the Act 120 allows us to have a greater pool of candidates to apply for the job. Uh, if 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 a person comes in, already has the Act 120, uh, that's okay. Anybody who doesn't is also okay. Uh, whoever is chosen uh from the top uh of the list, if they do not have the Act 120, we will send them to school, which takes six to seven months, and pay for their schooling also. So it it gives us a much broader appeal uh for candidates to come and work here in Haverford Township.
But for purposes of the of the ultimate goals of Act 120 and the training that's part of the police, this merely postpones that as opposed to eliminates it. Is that correct?
Oh, it does not eliminate. They 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 have to have Act 120 training uh to be police officers required by law. That's correct.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you. Uh, I want to thank the chief and the police committee. We met um, I think, prior to the new year and it's something that we stressed, that we wanted a more diverse uh group of applicants. And I want to thank the chief and the deputy chief for looking into this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I could add one more thing, Commissioners, uh, we're we're speaking to the FOP Police Union to do some restructuring uh for police cadets who do not have the Act 120. So hopefully in the next meeting, I can have uh some results of of salary forecast for the uh candidates who are in in training. So it's it's good news uh that we have talked about in the past with Amy and Dave.
Uh, item number 16 is Resolution Number 2214 2021, Transfer of 2020 Funds.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2214 of 2021, authorizing the transfer of 2020 funds.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn.
Mr. President, this was discussed at our work session by our um finance director. This is uh the annual event um where we um transfer the funds from 2020 into our 2021 budget.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, can you please call the call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Moving on to item number 17, Resolution Number 2215 2021, Recreation Department Multimodal Grant Application.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2215 2021 regarding, I'm sorry, requiring a repairian forest buffer grant in the amount of $50,000 from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to be used for repairian buffer restoration along Darby and Caracan Creek and designating Brian Barrett Director, Parks and Recreation Department, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grants.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any comments? I think we discussed this at the the work session as well.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Uh, item number 18, Resolution Number 2216 2021, Recreation Department, another multimodal grant application.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
President.
Yes.
Go ahead.
To adopt Resolution Number, you want to read this, Andy?
Yeah, well, it's in my ward, but you go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to move with, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2216-2021, requesting a construction grant in the amount of $125,000 from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to be used for the construction of a walking path around the Polo Field and be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate Brian Barrett, Director of Parks and Recreation Department, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva. I think we also discussed this at the work session, are there any? All right, Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number nineteen, resolution number twenty-two seventeen twenty twenty-one, zero waste use of incinerator in Chester.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two seventeen twenty twenty-one, that the township, that Haverford Township Board of Commissioners, that the board asks the Delaware County Council to ensure that the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority does not extend its disposal contract with the Delaware Valley Resource Recovery Facility when the option is presented to them by the Cavantra? Cavantra, as early as May one twenty twenty-one, and that before entering into another long-term waste disposal contract, it'll evaluate waste reduction and alternative waste management measures. The, what does that say? The environmental and health effects of disposal options for any remaining waste and environmental justice.
Second.
President.
Is that a second?
No, I'm sorry, I thought somebody seconded. Uh, I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Holmes, and go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I, I, I see in the resolution that there's a point about the current contract with the Delaware Valley Resource Recovery Facility, having the county provide a minimum of three hundred thousand tons of waste per year, or pays Covanta a waste shortfall fee, that sounds to me like that's some kind of covenant from financing, that Delaware County might be an obligated party, uh, to. Has anybody investigated that? Do we have, um, uh, any knowledge about, about that? Because I would be concerned if our pressure on county council to not pick up this contract again generated any kind of penalty, um, or triggered a, any kind of mechanism under any financings that Delaware County is, is a party to, because, as Vice President Quinn mentioned earlier, if the county ends up on the hook for something, it's the county's constituents that end up on the hook for something, so, um, and the idea that we pay a shortfall fee, I certainly recognize that from my days in municipal finance, as having some relation, because the law doesn't recognize penalties, it requires people to, to, you know, estimate liquidated damages as opposed to just penalize somebody for not doing something, makes me worry that this is a financial covenant, that we might be jamming up the county.
Can, can I address that, sir?
Please do.
Mr. Smith, please, yes.
Yeah, um, the, the, um, that, I don't know if it's covenant, but that, that's written into the language of the contract with Covanta, uh, so that's where that stipulation comes from, um, it's not, um, yeah, so it's, it's really, if, if we don't, if, if they don't sign that contract, then they don't have that obligation, so if they're disposing their waste in another way, they wouldn't have to, um, adhere to that minimum disposal. So that was, that was part of the contract they signed with Covanta, which ends in twenty twenty-two.
Any other comments?
Do we have any idea of pricing or magnitude of increase in price for any alternative means that you might be suggesting or available at this time technologically, or, I, I mean, we're, we're asking the county to possibly raise our rates, uh, and we have no idea how much.
Yeah, I guess, um, it's a good question, we don't know what the financial implications of this are, it was kind of beyond, um, the information we have, but it's not necessarily going to go off, I guess, if, um, if, if they take into account the, um, the waste reduction strategies, and, um, you know, I'm not sure it costs more to landfill than to, to burn it, so.
My.
I wouldn't assume it would be costing more to, to, um, to, to reduce the waste into, into landfill, the remains.
That's, it costs more to get a more efficient car, that's for sure.
Connor, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
I completely, completely get what's trying to be done, and, and I get, and I get it, but, um, I don't think I can support this based on the quick, the quick questions that I have, and some others on the board have raised, too, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
President, as I understand, we're talking about a, a contract that could be negotiated as early as May one twenty twenty-one, we still have an April meeting ahead of us and the opportunity to advise Delaware County then, I, I wouldn't mind hearing from our solicitor, with all respect to Mr. Smith, I, I'd like to hear from our legal counselor and answer to my question about any financial covenants associated with, um, that, that the county is obligated on, I, I, I find that existence in that contract of that, that specific language to be, um, uh, just the red flag for me, and, uh, if it just turns out it was part of a contract, and, and it would be eliminated, and there's no underlying obligation, that probably eliminates my concern, although I admit to you that Mr. Wexler's concerns about what are all the alternatives and how expensive are they, are legitimate concerns as well, um, but not seeing the need to, but let me put it this way, I'm a no vote tonight, but if we table this and I get an answer to my question about the financial covenants, I may, that may very well change my mind, so I'd recommend instead that we, that we consider tabling this, um, so I'll formally move to table.
And I'll second that.
Well, well.
Okay, second by Commissioner Quinn.
So I can't say anything now, because the motion to table isn't made, right?
Yeah, once, once the table's made, you gotta.
Sorry, Kevin.
You gotta vote on the table.
You could vote no to table, we can talk about it some more, yeah.
All right, Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
This is on a motion to table, right?
Motion to table.
Right.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
No.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
No, just, purely just so we could continue the discussion and get Mr. McCloskey's question.
Mr. Quinn.
That's the table.
Dr. Hart.
No.
So this doesn't mean we can't hear Mr. McCloskey's question, or can, this doesn't end discussion on the topic, it just means we've tabled the, the, the vote on the resolution, so.
Yeah, I guess, I, I, I mean, I just, as my understanding of the resolution was being proposed by Mr. Smith and our EAC, is, is essentially that they're saying, we want you to, to stop what you're doing, and we want you to explore all possible alternatives, assuming, you know, they have the most access to the information as to other possible alternative costs and other, um, you know, what it would cost them under their contract, you know, it's, it's not a contract we're, we're a party to, and presumably the county council would have that information, and they would also be able to explore what the possible alternatives are, and I think that's all the resolution is saying, um, but at its heart, what it's saying is that, uh, the, you know, the, the situation as it currently stands, um, something needs to be addressed in different before you renew that contract, regardless of the cost, given the environmental concerns and the, um, the systematic concerns that are coming from the residents who are surrounding this, this burning facility, um, who are raising their children in the area of that burning facility, so I, you know, I, I would have said that we could have, um, we could have discussed or passed or not passed that resolution tonight, um, I don't know, I, I don't see what under, getting a, getting an understanding of that, that contract, um, what, how that will change your mind in asking the county council to consider all their possible alternatives, one way or the other.
Well, if there's actually a liquidated damage provision in the contract that's associated with some kind of covenant, that, uh, that either the county or any authority that has taxing powers has to pay, if it doesn't meet certain financial covenants, it's going to fall on the citizens of Delaware County to pay.
Right, but why would, why would?
It's going to add to the cost.
How, why would that possibly extend beyond their, their, their contract terms? Nothing in this resolution is saying end the contract early, they're saying during the period of renegotiation for the next contract, right? So why, why would a liquidated damage?
I just want to know an answer to the question, because it, that kind of.
Right, but I mean, are you saying in your municipal, are you saying in your municipal experience that these liquidated damages extend beyond the contract terms?
I don't know whether Delaware County has any obligations.
Have you ever seen a contract where the liquidated damages extend beyond a contract's terms?
Well, I've seen, I've seen thirty-year bonds that have all sorts of financial covenants, but then there's only contracts that are only four or five years, because the municipality that joins, goes into the contracts, can't, can't bind themselves for four or five, you know, more than four or five years, but each time they renew the contract, they've got to address the covenants that they have separate responsibilities for. I don't know the answer to the question, Kevin, I'm not doing this solely to try to impress people with my being smart, I don't know the answer to the question, and I'm concerned about it, because it raises the potential cost of an alternative means of, 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 of energy disposal, you know, of, of, of waste disposal here, I just want us to have the facts, that's all. This is the, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I might, if I slept through a previous meeting, I apologize, but I, did I know about this before tonight?
No.
Okay, so I didn't sleep through it, all right, so I, I, you know, we're telling the county, don't enter this contract, start thinking about alternative means, I just like to know more.
But wouldn't it behoove us to use the time between now and next month, either to task someone or some group to find out, get us more information, you know, we've raised questions about the financial costs of doing this, we've raised questions, uh, about the contract in general and its implications, uh, and we also don't know, you know, what if any intention the county has, we're essentially voting on a resolution that says, yeah, pollution's bad, make it better, and I'd rather have more information so that we can see perhaps the county does have some plan and we don't know about it, or perhaps there's other things happening, or there's information that would influence us, if we found out it, you know, it quadrupled our disposal costs, uh, that would be a concern, if it doesn't, or other alternatives are reasonable, it makes a difference, so I'd like to get more information other than just vote on something that to me is, it feels good, but it doesn't move the ball forward in the goal of finding out how we can reduce the pollution or a lick from the plant.
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Siegel here, I think that we, there are some questions that need to be answered before we go ahead and, and pass something like this, I'm in support of this, this, uh, uh, resolution, uh, moving forward and, and reducing greenhouse gases, and, um, and I think you did a, a great job, Noel, in presenting this, um, I just think that we need a little more information, if we had that information, um, I think that, that this would pass, uh, easily on this board, I just think there's a lot of questions to be asked, and, and we didn't have it in the work session, there wasn't time for us to, to, to ask questions, so, um, I appreciate the, the, the presentation, but I think we just have, have some questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, uh, Noel, I think you did a fantastic job, please thank the EAC for me, uh, you know I'll support this, we need to get some more information, to get some more teeth, to get the rest of the board, uh, feeling comfortable with this, so, um, I would ask that if anyone has any suggestions to email Noel, and, and, uh, provide him some, uh, feedback on where he can go and what we can do, do we need, uh, do we need the solicitor's help in this at all?
Yeah, I would suggest that the solicitor.
Yeah.
At least inquire at the county level, uh, about any obligation that extends beyond this contract, or any underlying obligation the county has associated with this authority, um, and then perhaps also that our solicitor reaches out to the county solicitor to see if there's any, um, if there's anything consistent with what, uh, Commissioner Siegel was describing as, you know, the county already perhaps having a plan, um, or new ideas or better information to give us back, so.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of dumping this on our solicitor, anybody agree?
I agree, I mean, is it okay, uh, Mr. Berman, uh, you, you get with Noel?
I agree, let's dump it on the solicitor.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, Noel, I'm happy to do so, and, and I, and I will do it, and get back to you before the work session.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we voted to table, I must say, I, I agree with Commissioner McCloskey, I mean, I think ultimately, we're, this is a incinerator that should never have been built next to, and was built in the poorest part of the county, um, is responsible for, um, a great deal, definitely environmental injustice to that area, uh, it's contributing to, um, global warming is something that we've been passing resolutions about for years, I'm not sure what information we're going to get that's going to change our mind to say, in fact, we, we're not opposed to this, but we're going to do it.
Yeah, I, I just, just, just to piggyback on that, and I, I, I don't want to belabor it, but I, I just, I just think we're misreading the resolution, we're not, this, this, this is saying there's an injustice with where this plant is, and this group of residents that surround the plant have asked other municipalities in their county to support them in their efforts to talk to the county, and that's all we're doing, we're, we're not, we're not negotiating a contract for the county, we're not, I, I just, I, 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 I struggle to see what the, where, where, you know, we're going to gather more information that really is going to change what the ultimate point of this is, but that's, we tabled it, it's fine.
Let's move on, uh, item number twenty, contracts.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we award the federal school improvement contract to LJ Halella, construction of Brookhaven, Pennsylvania, in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Uh, it's worth noting, the work, uh, the work will be funded by CD BG Monies and, uh, money, and available on the Historic Structures account within the Capital Projects.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Uh, Mr. Berman, could you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio. Uh, Mr. Aliva.
Uh, yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number twenty-one, purchases, vehicles.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we authorize the purchase of the following vehicles, uh, for the Recreation Department, a Ford F five fifty crew cab, low-boy dump truck with a nine-foot western plow and spreader, from Hun drew Ford of Manheim, Pennsylvania, under Co-Stars number twenty-five dash oh twelve, sorry, zero twelve, in the amount of seventy-six thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars, for the Highway Department, one, uh, I believe, also Ford F five fifty, regular cab, low-boy dump truck with a nine-foot western plow and spreader, from Hun drew Ford, Manheim, Pennsylvania, under Co-Stars twenty-five dash twelve, also, uh, in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, one international cab and chassis HV five zero seven, for a full-size dump truck from Hunter International, Logan Township, New Jersey, under Co-Stars number twenty-five, in the amount of eighty-six thousand nine dollars and one cent, one stainless steel dump body with a ten-foot plow and spreader for the chassis, previously mentioned chassis, from HA De Hart and Sons, Thoroughfare, New Jersey, under Co-Stars number twenty-five dash fifty-two, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand two hundred five dollars, for the Sewer Department, one international cab and chassis MV six zero seven, for a sewer jet truck, from Hunter Truck of Logan Township, New Jersey, under Co-Stars number twenty-five dash one zero two, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand seventy-three dollars, and one super product jet truck body model number one oh eight SPRP dash WC, uh, for the, uh, above international cab, from HA De Hart and Son of Thoroughfare, New Jersey, under Co-Stars twenty-five dash fifty-two, in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars, for the sanitation department, one international cab and chassis HV six zero seven SBA, from GL Sayers Incorporated, from Contra Hocken, Pennsylvania, under Co-Stars, uh, under Co-Stars number twenty-five dash seventeen, in the amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, and also for the sanitation department, one twenty-yard leach trash recycling body, mounted on the international cab above, from Grand Turk Equipment of Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, under Co-Stars number twenty-five dash forty-six, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Second.
My bill. Bill's second.
Oh, second by Commissioner Wexler. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number twenty-two, Winfield Drive Flood Mitigation Study.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
We are to consider the recommendation of our township manager on this contract, so if he could tell us, uh, who he recommends, uh, that we award the Winfield Drive Flood Mitigation Study, uh, to.
Thank you.
Thank you. There were, I don't know if you can hear me, there were three responses and three proposals received in response to our RFP. And it was reviewed by several staff members and also other volunteers of our planning commission. And we're making a recommendation to award a contract to Michael Baker International in an amount not to exceed $48,972.37, subject to a contract form acceptable to the township solicitor.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the recommendation of the township manager to award the professional contract for the Winfield Drive flood mitigation study to Michael Baker International, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $48,972.37, subject to acceptable contracts to the township solicitor.
You see, our second.
Second.
Commissioner Demilio. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 23, appointments, senior citizens advisory board, Ward 1, Mr. Demilio.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Carol Finicaro.
You and Ward 7.
I'm proud to appoint somebody from Ward, Ward 7, or Diane Amatia, Amatia.
Thank you. Next is the Shea Tree Commission.
James Stevenson. I'll make a note, motion to appoint James Stevenson to fill an unexpired buyer, three-year term to expire by around December 31st or 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Next is the vacancy committee. Is there any motion? I think we were going to leave this open.
I move we postpone this to the next month and once again advertise any interested constituent to submit a resume.
We're going to leave the vacancy committee vacant.
There's a certain irony to that.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number 24, continuation of the citizens forum. Mr. Berman, are there any other?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Item 25, anyone have any new business? Item 26, other business, Mr. Demilio.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we stated earlier about the flooding issue, once I meet with Mr. Berman and go over their findings, Penoni's, Dave Penoni's findings, I certainly will relay that to the constituents in my ward. And hopefully we'll have some answers for some of the flooding that's occurring that never occurred before, especially on Windsor Park Avenue and neighborhoods like Maryland and Upland and those areas that experienced, experienced significant flooding during the spring. Was it the spring? Yeah, we had those bad storms at the beginning of the spring. So we'll be, we'll be looking into that. That's all I have right now.
As my fellow commissioners know, tomorrow is the filing date for the primary election in May. I've decided I will not be seeking reelection as commissioner of the second ward. I wanted, I wanted you guys to hear it from me first. I am proud of the work we have done here together for the past 16 years to make both the second ward and the entire township a better place for the residents. And I look forward to working with all of you for the next nine months to continue our efforts in keeping, have for township a great place. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McCloskey.
How do you follow that? I don't, I don't. Best of luck, best of luck to Commissioner Oliva. I'm sure we'll have nine months to express more thoughts when I, when, when there's time to think them out, but best of luck to you. Thank you for your service. As, I was just going to talk about an issue near and dear to all of our hearts. The weather has warmed up and, you know, as you're standing on your front lawn and a car goes driving by at the suggested speed limit of 25 miles an hour, it looks like they're flying down a highway. So I know there are some people that drive through the town commuting, but overwhelming majority of people that use our residential streets are Harford Township residents. And I would just ask all of you to consider that when you're going 25 miles an hour, even though that is the speed limit on a residential street and springtime has come and parents are out and people are out and bikes are riding, maybe you could slow down a little bit. It would ease, ease the concern of, I know many residents. So hopefully we can all just do our part in that regard. You know, this, and I also wanted to just touch base on the, the issue of stormwater. As everybody has acknowledged, we're having problems all throughout the township. I for one, and I, I would hope my colleagues are all on board. You know, we voted for, for the very well-deserving issues on Winfield Drive. Committed to if the townships and the engineers decide the next place we can make the most impact is in the first, the ninth, second to sixth, I don't, I don't care what, it's all benefit of Harford Township. So, you know, we, I hope we can make as good a decisions for the residents as we can because we are having an aging infrastructure and these are issues that need to be addressed. So that's all I have for tonight.
Commissioner Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to piggyback on some comments. And first I thank Mr. Oliva for his service. I know the difficulty of making these decisions, obviously, as recently as I have. And I, I want to echo particularly what Commissioner Demilio said about the flooding and the issues. It, it's easy from the outside to simply perceive that when there is a problem, elected officials can, you know, snap our fingers and make things better. We have to work behind the scenes. We work with, within budgets, within the limitations of our communities, both physically and financially. And the flooding that the one resident discussed tonight is not the only area in the township. And, you know, when we're able to give a full report, you know, we're talking about millions of dollars that have to be allocated and the time it takes for proper studies, recommendations, bidding, et cetera, to do any of these projects. So while it, it seems easy to simply say that we can accomplish something, it takes the team of the township and it takes time. And, you know, if you watch our board, you can see that certain projects take longer and certain projects, we've spent a lot of time and money dealing with flooding in the eighth ward, Winfield Drive. And we haven't come up with all the solutions. So all I can say to residents is, please be patient. Please understand that even though we may not report back to you every month or every week, it doesn't mean we aren't doing what we can within our limitations. And that goes for every member of this board because we all have variations on these or similar problems. And finally, I encourage everyone, when you can, please be vaccinated. You know, I have not attended any of these meetings in person. I'm trying to be extremely conservative and look forward to the day when I get eligible for a vaccine. So I can finally, you know, I like being in my kitchen, but I like being other places too. So please, you know, be smart, get vaccinated, and hopefully we can be together sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, so for the, for the past almost five years, four and a half, five years, we've had two bridge projects in, in the fifth ward. Kevin shares part of, abuts the, the fifth ward. So he, he has a little bit of, shared a little bit of the, and so has Dan, shared a little bit of the brunt and as, as has the whole township of those two projects. And for the last almost three and a half years, we've had non-stop utility projects, whether it be Aqua or, or Pico, it's, it's just relentless. And, and I think it's relentless in almost every war, every township and municipality in, in, maybe in the county, I don't know, but it's, and I, you know, I think they're, obviously this is the way they get their rate increases. I could, you know, can justify rate increases, but I, I, I've really had enough. And I think our residents have had, had enough. And I would, when I ask our solicitor, you know, what we can do to just, just say, just say no for, just give our residents some, a year off or two. Because I think somebody, we're just exhausted by all these, you know, detours and road closures. And I'd like to see if we can just, you know, take, take a year. And I probably can't do it, do it obviously on state, state highways. But I'm just wondering, what are, what are our rights as a township when Pico and Aqua come in and say they want to do certain township roads? If we just say no, we're going to take a year or two off, come back in a year or two. All these projects, again, I think are driven by, you know, trying to get rate increases. So anyway, Jim, I guess my question's to you. I don't know whether you know the answer off the top of your head, but if you do, please tell me. And if you don't, if you could research that question and see if we, we can. Because I, I'm just, I'm just exhausted by the projects.
Yeah, thanks. And, and I'm happy to do that. I, I understand your frustration. I don't want to just answer off the top of my head because I don't want to say something that I'll later regret. So I'll, I'll have you an answer before the next work session.
Okay. I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel here, but it's just everywhere you go, there's a road closure and a detour. So, or a road closed completely. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lewis, I, since I knew I was going next, I would say I agree with you. I, I've had, I've had a three-month project take now, starting its eighth month on Wynwood, on Wynwood Road, right through the center of my ward. Avon Road has been a disaster for months. People are putting signs on people's lawns and they, they can do it because the law seems to allow it, but it's really, it's really an imposition on our, on our colleagues. And I look forward to finding out from Mr. Byrne what power we do have to put a moratorium on this or at least postpone it for a while. Because, boy, it would seem that all of us have construction fatigue. And I am wondering if these are 50-year infrastructure repairs, did they really need to do them all over the course of 18 months? I mean, I, it's just astonishing to me how much work they're doing. But in the context of infrastructure, I do want to thank all my colleagues for supporting the Winfield Drive flood investigation. After three significant floods in the last decade and two, two years in a row, it's really worth examining whether there are steps the township can take. And I don't mean the township, you know, fixing people's houses or doing private work. But is there township work that the township can do at Merwood Park? For instance, to raise the berms or increase the capacity of that park to act as a flood plain during the really bad storms? Fixes like that, which engineering, we specifically solicited engineers with that kind of experience to be able to advise us on the steps we can take. So I, I promise everybody in the township that the money spent on what appears to be a sixth ward project, really will be useful for all of us throughout the township. And the fact is that day while that flood was going on and flooding was happening in other parts of the township where we've seen floods before and some places where you hadn't seen floods at all. Any part of the township that gets clobbered in a storm like that absorbs 100% of the township's resources and prevents our, our first responders and others from being in other places where people may need to get help. So any work we do in an individual place does have a significant impact on the entire township. So thank you again for all, for supporting that when I asked for it last year and for supporting the, Mr. Berman's choice tonight. Finally, it won't be the final thing I say on it. I'm just hearing about it tonight. But my colleague to my left was part of the revolution in 2005 when we ran. And I will look forward to the next nine months with you here, but I'm sad to see you go. We didn't always get together on a lot of things and we fought like mad on some. But on some of the biggest issues we had to deal with in this township, Mario, you were always on, you were on the right side of a lot of those. So it wouldn't be fair for me not to acknowledge that and to tell you that the revolution wouldn't have happened without you being part of it. All I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn.
Bill.
Oh, Commissioner Wexler.
Yeah, I'll just add my congratulations to Mario, which must have been a tough decision. And thank you for your service as well. This past Wednesday, PennDOT sprung a surprise on, on the ninth ward and traffic in general in our police department by making a three-way intersection, all stop intersection at Vermont and Glendale Roads. Caught us a little off guard. But both, our phones started ringing off the hook. I spoke to Chief Iola. His phone was ringing. I'm sure Sergeant Bedrosian and Deputy Chief Hagan also heard about it as well. But that, for anybody that's listening, that intersection, which has traditionally been a right turn, keep moving in two directions, is now a three-way stop. And so it becomes a dangerous intersection that they didn't sign very well and indicating the change. To the point that even some of our school buses went right through it on Thursday and Friday because they just weren't aware of it. The signs aren't big enough. So I know that I've spoken to Representative Zabel. His staff should have reached out by now to our police department to find out exactly what type of signs we're going to require or request to make it visible. And then hopefully we might even get our temporary signs up there to warrant for a week or two and whatever enforcement that the police department thinks appropriate to, to assist with that conversion. But just be aware that it's now a three-way stop in all three directions. And it will be a little bit dicey for the next couple of weeks to break the habits of people going through there, especially coming down Glendale Road. So, thank you.
Bill, what prompted them to do that now, all of a sudden?
It's part of the intersection improvement that's requested of the grant that intersection's going to be teed off. When they came and inspected it, they were kind of surprised that it was a, that it was set up the way it was. It should have been a three-way stop and their engineers, traffic engineers, thought it should be a three-way stop. And it'll also alleviate, based upon the traffic studies are there. It backs up so far up Vermont Road in the morning because every, all the traffic coming down Glendale that there's no opportunity for traffic to proceed in the, in the two directions heading up Blue Route. So that they just corrected either what they were calling an oversight or a mis-marking of the intersection from years ago. So at least that's the way I understood. Chief, if you have anything more to add, I'd be more than happy. But it's, we're just going to work through it. And I think our diligence on the police department side and, and making people aware is going to hopefully help avoid any further, any accidents at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did speak to the state representative's office on Friday after you had talked to them. I asked them to put bigger signs up there, stop signs, and also the bigger three-way stops. And we're working to get our variable message boards that are also to announce a change.
Great. Yes. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Quinn.
Or Mario, it's been great to sit here on this board and you've been a friend of mine for years now. And when I joined, joined. And when I joined, joined this board, you were there to, to support, support me and to listen to me and to hear me out on things. And sometimes it was fun, but, but I'm proud to call you a friend. So, thank you for, for that.
Mutual.
Thanks, buddy. And then last month, our township lost, somebody who meant a lot to me, but meant a lot to the town, talent, township Kathy Cox. She, she started the soccer league here in this town and sir, and did, did a lot, I'm sure a lot of your kids played, played for, or played for the soccer teams. And, and it is a tough, tough loss for, for our town, just hearing all the things that she's done. And I was proud to call, to call her an aunt. So, so rest in peace to her. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
She was a great woman, Connor.
Yeah, I'm also was stunned by the news tonight of Commissioner Oliva. It's been a pleasure working with you for these last three years. The board is going to be dramatically different next year with your departure and Commissioner Siegel's. We, you've been here for quite a long time. I'm happy that we have nine more months, but thank you for your service.
Mr. Rock, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to also sign a happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. Next week, before that happens, we also have daylight savings time, Sunday morning at 2:00 a.m., so we'll have longer evenings. And I wanted to follow up. I was going to acknowledge Kathy Cox's passing. She was really an outstanding woman, raised 13 children and still had the energy to, to be very involved in the community and really outstanding contributions to the Haverford Soccer Program. My first interaction with Kathy was about a little over 20 years ago when I got a letter in the mail at the end of August with my, the 15 players I was going to have on my soccer team. And it was pretty surprising since I hadn't volunteered to coach soccer and I didn't know that much about soccer. And I called Kathy and she said, oh, it will be fine. And it was. And she was really, Kathy never played soccer, despite that, she was inducted into the Delaware County Soccer Hall of Fame, so she, she will be missed. That's all I have. Everybody have a safe, good night. Have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Thank you.